All right, I'm going to call the meeting to order. 7:00 PM. Welcome, everyone. I'm Counselor Kirby and Acting Mayor for the months of January, February, and March, so I get the pleasure of chairing the Committee of the Whole Meetings. I'm going to start off with an acknowledgement that the land on which we gather is the traditional territory of the Coast and Strait Salish peoples. Specifically, we recognize the La Cangan-speaking people known today as the Songhees and the Squamalnations, and that their historic connections to these lands continue to this day. "Osei am nu chila cha," which means, "Welcome, my honorable friends." So please note that video recordings of meetings are streamed live and archived on the municipal website. So just be aware that the camera's on behind you and probably won't capture the back of your heads way back there, but certainly will capture the group here. So, we have a fairly short agenda. Didn't say that. Light agenda. And we're going to start with the Parks, Recreation, and Culture item, which is the Parks Recreation and Culture Commission minutes. And we have Ray Herman, our Director of Parks, Recreation, and Culture, here in attendance. So I'd like to start with any questions from the Committee to Mr. Herman? Or did you want to give us a brief overview of your report?
Madam Chair, sure, thank you. I can. It was also a light agenda and a relatively short meeting. Mayor Jensen came to give his annual address to the Commission and thank them for their work, and also was able to greet two new staff members. Jennifer Grelson is our Manager of Administrative Services, and Steve Meekel is our new Manager of Recreation and Cultural Services. And thanked outgoing Manager of Recreation and Cultural Services Janet Barkley. It was her last Commission meeting before she retires. Her last day of work is actually tomorrow. Other than that, there was one report on a request from Special Olympics BC to hold a Polar Plunge fundraising event at Willows Beach on March the 11th, which was approved. Looking forward to that event, and they're working closely with a number of the RCMP and a number of police departments in the region, including Oak Bay Police. So that should be a well-attended event and probably worth watching. Other than that, just the regular reports, monthly reports and information that comes forward to the Commission. And then, as I mentioned at the end, there was some additional acknowledgement of Ms. Barkley's contributions to the department over the last eight years.
Thank you. Okay, Counselor Ne?
Yeah, I've got a question for you, Chief Wirth. From the other side of the chair. Oh, thank you very much. I was wondering if you could just give us a bit more information about the increased bike racks that are being installed? It sounds like you worked that out with the high school, and I'm wondering how many additional racks are anticipated. Thank you.
Through the chair, I guess the role certainly of staff in the department was to pass along the concerns that had been raised at the Commission meeting to the school district staff. And in speaking with Principal Falls, she was coordinating those efforts through the School District Facilities Division, and indicated that she would contact members of the Greater Victoria Cycling Coalition when the time came to be ready to install those racks, which was done. And I'm told there's additional racks, and I've seen them. Now, I don't specifically know how many additional racks there were, but I do know that those members of the community were contacted to discuss the location of the racks and what have you. So as far as I'm aware, it's -- the issue's been resolved to hopefully everybody's satisfaction.
Thank you for doing that. I know they're badly needed, and there's been a lot of demand for that. So thank you for being involved with that.
Counselor -- oh.
I'll move receipt.
Oh. Any further comments or questions, Counselors Elka?
Thank you, Chair. A great minutes, and I'm glad everything's moving along like tickety-boo. With respect to the Francophone 2020 Games, is it too soon to ask how that's going?
Through the chair, I've not had the opportunity to chat with the organizers since they came to the last Council meeting, but I do have their contact information. And probably the next step for me is to start to put together the sort of a budget or a cost estimate of the facilities that they've asked for, and what that would mean in terms of support that Council may want to consider. And once I've kind of got that sort of done, I'll probably contact those folks just to make sure we're on the same page as to what they really are looking for, and then bring something forward for Council's consideration. I believe the direction was to have that ready for the estimates meeting, which would be the first -- our meeting is the first Wednesday in April, so that's the timeline that I'm working with.
Counselor Kraft?
I can verify that the bike racks have been installed. They have been installed correctly. You can actually get bikes in from both sides, which is really nice. I know that because I was there last Thursday when the GVCC was there installing Oak Bay Police stickers on students' bikes and public that afternoon. So the Oak Bay Police were there in attendance, helping register bikes. So it was very well-attended, I understand.
Thanks. That's great. If there are no further questions or comments from the Committee, I'm just going to add my two cents. Thank you for coordinating with the -- and passing on that information to the Principal. I appreciate that, considering how many bikes have gone missing and just how many other issues there are around bike parking at the high school. I appreciate that. I also want to say I get to do the send-off for Janet Barkley later in the week, but I'm -- as Acting Mayor, I'm standing in, and so I'll get an opportunity to thank her in person, but I still appreciate the work that she did with us. We've had -- she's been an amazing part of the team, and so I know she'll be missed, but I did have the pleasure of meeting her replacement, Steve Meekel, at the Public Art Advisory Committee meeting last week. And he seems like really keen and excited to get to work, so that's really encouraging. So I'm glad you've found an as enthusiastic replacement as Janet always seems to be. So thank you for that. Okay, I'm going to call the question. All in favor? Opposed? None opposed? Thank you very much. Thank you, Director Herman. All right, moving along to the finance item. We have a report from the Director of Financial Services, Debbie Carter, and it's called "The Proposed Reserve and Surplus Policy." If you want to give us an overview of that, Ms. Carter, that'd be appreciated.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So the report before you is intended to provide guidelines and direction for the establishment and maintenance of reserves and accumulated surpluses. We have a number of reserves that have existed on the books to date, and so this is just a little more of a formal structure to provide information and guidance for Council and the public. Important to note that it is a work in progress. It's by no means intended to be a final document. There is still work to be done in terms of, for example, minimum balances recommended, maximum balances, and what the optimal levels will be. And we can add that as an appendix to this policy later on, once we've had a chance to do further research. This policy adheres to the municipal best practices and follows the protocol recommended by the Government Finance Officers Association, or the GFOA. So it is quite similar to a number of other municipal reserve policies that you might see. So with that, I would entertain any questions.
Okay, I'll start off with Counselor Ne.
Thank you very much, through you, Chair, to Ms. Carter. Thank you very much for this overview. It's really useful to have all the reserve funds in one place and a description of what each one's objective is about. So -- and I do appreciate it's a living document, so I'll look forward to more information as you're able to put that together to help us understand the caps and, you know, limits that we're aiming for in these different funds. One of the questions I had was, as I went through this, I was trying to figure out where the Infrastructure Renewal Fund would reside. If it's in one of these, or if it's a separate fund, and if it's a separate fund, why it wouldn't be here, or how we can capture that. Thank you.
Thank you, through the chair. The Infrastructure Renewal or Asset Management Fund that was discussed or set up last year is actually part of the Capital Works Reserve Fund currently. Within the Capital Works Reserve Fund, there are a number of projects located in a sub-ledger, and that's where that would be. So we can do it either way. We can leave it where it is in the Capital Works Reserve Fund, or we could set it up with its own fund that is reported out regularly, whatever Council's choice is.
Yep. Follow-up?
To staff, I guess, then. With that, you've sort of put something out there for Council to make some consideration because my personal view is that, given that's a reserve fund that we've got our eye on and we're trying to really sort of beef up, given the asset management report, I think it would be useful to have that more visible. But what I'd like to ask staff, would that require a motion from the Committee, or is that just something that you're sort of making a list of different possibilities around?
Through the chair, my recommendation would be that, like the other reserve funds that we have, we develop a bylaw for that, and so it's administered that way.
Thank you.
That would mean the Council would need a motion to agree on that at some point. Okay, thank you.
Mayor Jensen?
Thank you very much. A number of questions written out on my iPad, but apparently when you update them, all those disappear. I discovered. But in any event, I'll think I can reconstruct some of them. In terms of how this policy fits with respect to past practices, can you comment on that, please?
Through the chair, most of our reserve funds are set up by bylaw, and so the bylaws dictate what's in the fund and how it is to be spent. So this would be similar to the way that the reserve funds have been managed over the years. So there's really not much difference at this point.
Through you. So really what we're doing is just centralizing it in one easy-to-read document and drawing from those bylaws?
That's correct, and it's just a little more formal mechanism for managing the reserve funds.
Okay, and certainly helpful, too. I know, just in terms of the sub-ledgers that you call them, would it just be possible, or is it advisable just to list them, you know, underneath those? So for instance, I had in mind that we've been putting money aside for erosion control on McNeil Bay, which I assume is in that one also, but just having all the heads of the list of the subcategories, not necessarily put them in a bylaw, but so we know what's in there?
Through the chair, we could certainly do that. There's quite a large number of line items in the sub-ledger, and at this point, I feel that there may be an opportunity for some cleanup of some old funds and maybe some consolidation. So that is something that should come forward.
And that could come forward at the same time as any bylaw? Again, if I may continue, the Police Board, some years ago, or a year ago, when they changed contract for major crime from Sandage to the Vancouver Island Major Crime Unit, VIMQ, started a reserve in case of a major crime, or particularly homicide, that had extra costs to it, which are not covered by VIMQ. Where is that embedded in this? Because I assume somewhere it's a reserve fund we've been adding, I think we've added to last year, perhaps a year before, to make sure that we're not caught, you know, we're not caught short in major investigations.
Yes, that's correct. That one was not set up by bylaw. It is part of the general reserve funds. So under the general reserve funds, there could be a number of reserves that would be similar to that.
Okay. So really, is that -- that was my other question, the terminology "general reserve fund," is that the same thing as saying "general operating reserve fund," to distinguish it from the general capital fund?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, so I'm wondering if that -- is that something that needs a motion to change? Just make it a little more clear in terms of what's operating and what's capital? Just helpful for readers of that. And just finally, on the issue of setting, you'd mentioned over time you'll set maximum and minimums levels. To some extent, I think in some of these, correct me if I'm wrong, it's kind of been done, for instance, in fire machinery and equipment. We know that we're saving up towards $700,000 or $800,000 fire truck in so many years in advance. So is that -- that would be an example of it? It's already been done, at least in one reserve?
Yes, through the chair, that's correct. And if you look at, for example, the Central Sandage policy, they have an appendix attached to the reserve fund that outlines where the funding comes from for that reserve, what the minimum balance should be, maximum balance, et cetera. And so I would see doing something similar to that.
Thank you, Chair. I think this is a really important step forward. It puts us on a lot better basis for not only us to understand, but the general public to understand, you know, how our reserve funds work and what we actually have on hand. And it goes nicely with the earlier report. Actually, it talked about some of the numbers, so I want to thank staff very much for doing that. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any further questions or comments from Committee? Counselor Murdock?
Thank you. Through you, Chair. A couple of quick questions. The Heritage Reserve Fund, there was a quote there in quoting the bylaw that says, "No money shall be appropriated from the fund save those required for the purpose of land development projects and other capital investments." Doesn't it are designed to augment the net present value of the principal? Is that? Can you explain what that meaning is? I read that as you can't invest it in something that you're not going to get your money back out of. But does that include things like land and buildings, or is it purely to keep and use as interest?
Through the chair, that's a tough one, but I'll do my best to answer it. That one comes -- that statement comes directly out of the bylaw that was prepared for the reserve fund quite some time ago, a number of years ago. And my interpretation of that would be that the money in that fund, aside from the interest, should be used for investments that would, to keep it simple, appreciate as opposed to assets that might depreciate.
Okay, so keep the capital. You spend the interest. Okay, thank you. That's helpful. And there's no background on that as to why that was designated like that particularly?
I haven't been able to find any further information on that. Like I said, it was quite some time ago, so.
Okay, thank you. Can you also just explain the current policy? Because I look at these sort of -- if the policies are acceptable or not, it's kind of -- I'm not entirely clear on one piece, and that is, there's obviously a fairly significant amount in some years of unappropriated surpluses. And you go into a description there of what those are, but I'm just not entirely clear on how they're actually applied. So again, if Parks and Rec has an excess of one year, does that stay in Parks and Rec for future use, or does it go into a general, or does it go to capital? Or what is the policy currently, or is there a policy, and it's just a best effort?
Through the chair, there isn't a policy, and so that was part of the consideration in bringing this policy forward. What's happened in the past is that if there are surplus funds at the end of the year, and we know that there are large projects coming up in the next year, we will do our best to set aside some funds in order to cover those larger projects so that it doesn't have to hit taxes in the following year. So if we're aware of those types of things, some of those funds get allocated to reserve.
Thank you. Through you, Chair. So if there isn't such a big project coming up that we know of, are they just essentially sort of divvied up as best guess in terms of where the best use is then?
Yeah, it has been at the discretion of the Finance Director previously, and so there should be a little bit more structure around that. I think there needs to be still some flexibility, but also, you know, some guidance going forward with that. So, for example, you brought up the Rec Center, and yes, that is one of the areas where some funds have been set aside in the past to cover replacement of fitness equipment or computers and things like that.
But the surpluses in that case are not being put aside for those purposes. Those are essentially -- we do put money aside for no-one replacements. That's not the surplus, that's just the no-one pieces that we put money aside for. Is that correct?
Yes, through the chair. Although there has been occasion where some funds will be set aside if there are significant or much higher surpluses within the Rec Center, for example, than what was anticipated, then at times in the past, some of those funds have been set aside for the Rec Center.
Okay, thank you. That's all my questions. I have some comments, but I'll for questions now. Thank you.
Counselor Braithwaite?
Thanks so much, so much, through you, Chair. Can you tell me how much in excess a year we're talking about? About?
Typically, the surpluses vary, but it's not generally -- we don't budget for a surplus. So it's generally for items that we thought we were going to have expenditures against, and it didn't happen. Or, for example, there's a contingency in each year's budget, and if that isn't used, then that would be a surplus. So it varies from year to year.
So are we talking like $2 million on average, or there's no? No. That would be nice. Okay, so my next question then is to do with the Parking Reserve Fund. So my recollection is that this fund came about because businesses or buildings or whatever within the municipality, when they didn't give leave to have enough parking spaces attached to their building or to their business, then they were given a fee to pay per parking spot. And I think, if my memory served me correctly, it was about $9,800 a spot. Does that sound right, or was it $15,000? I think it was 98. It was around $10,000 maybe a spot. So, and I know in that fund, as per your last report, we have about $912,000 or something like that. So my question is, is that when was the last time we actually had money put into that fund? And as a Council, I guess maybe what I look at is, I look at buildings that have just been built within Oak Bay or that are being built within Oak Bay, and I'll use the Clive and the Bauker as an example. The Clive had 22 parking spots that we gave them a variance for. If you times that by $9,800, that would be $215,000. That could have gone into this fund. And the Bauker had 68 parking spots, which, times $9,800 a parking spot, would have been $666,000 that we could have had put into this fund. So I guess, as a Council, I'm wondering why we give leave to these businesses to not put money into this fund? Because it would seem to me that that money, that's almost a million dollars, that money could be very well utilized within the municipality for other things. So I'm not sure if you know, it's kind of more of a comment, but maybe you can give me some background or something on that.
Sure. Unfortunately, I'm not able to answer that right now. I'd have to do a little bit more digging to find out, and I'm not sure whether our Acting Director of Planning can offer any further information in that regard, but we could certainly look into it for you.
Just of interest. I mean, I think it's something that we, as a Council, need to talk about. If that's something that was done in the past, then perhaps we still need to carry that forward so that we can put more money into that fund. There's a reason that that fund was started to begin with, so.
You'll provide us with some information at another time? Okay, yeah, thanks. Okay, are there any other further questions? Counselor Zelka?
Thank you very much, Chair. Excellent report, thank you very much. It's great to get a sense of all these wonderful reserve funds that are there to support the community. I guess I'll start with the Community Amenities and Development Cost Charges. I understand a policy and possibly bylaw is being prepared to come forward soon. Will there -- is it anticipated that there'll be a special reserve fund set up for those funds, or are they imagining they'll be going into some of these funds that are already there? Just wanted to ask what's being suggested.
Yes, through the chair, there will be separate reserve funds for those that have to be tracked and reported separately.
Thank you. And I also had a similar question relating to the Parking Reserve Funds. And I do look forward to maybe our Acting Director of Building and Planning possibly bringing some information forward to find out what we should or should not do for future developments coming forward, in addition to Community Amenities and, of course, the Parkland Acquisition Reserve Funds. Thank you very much.
If there are no further -- okay, Counselor Kraft?
I just want to go back to your work in progress. I know we have estimates coming up, so what is your kind of timing that you think you're going to come back with this, with more information, guidelines, and those kinds of things that would give us some of the more meat to this present bylaw, or whatever you call it? Thanks.
So through the chair, what I would like to do is go through our year-end process so that we have a clean balance at the end of the year of what's in each reserve. Unfortunately, there isn't a one-size-fits-all for the values that should be in the reserve. That would be too easy, I think. But so we need to look at each individual reserve to determine what Oak Bay needs going forward, and then I can bring those recommendations forward. So realistically, it probably won't happen until after year-end.
Thank you. Any further questions? Counselor Zelka?
Thank you. Just wanted to ask for some clarification regarding the question on the same lines as Counselor Kraft. Is it anticipated, then, early in the new year, it'll be updated policy? Or you also mentioned that probably you may want to bring forward or have this formalized in a bylaw. I wasn't quite sure. What is the next step, and what were the final step that you're really hoping for, please?
So the next step would be that Council could endorse the policy as-is, with the caveat, knowing that it is a living document, and amendments will be brought forward. So the next step would be if Council chooses that this report, go to Council for endorsement approval, and then, once we have the additional information, we can add that as an appendix that would then be approved by Council as well.
I'll follow up if I may, please, Chair. You made reference to a bylaw. Could you speak a bit more about that in terms of what possibly a final goal is that you'd be asking for?
Sorry, the bylaw would be for individual reserve funds. So for example, the DCCs would require a separate bylaw. There's a Community Humanity Contribution, those types of things. The document I've put before you today is a policy document, so it's different than a bylaw.
All right, any further questions? Counselor Murdock? Is it comments?
Question, actually. Just following up on Counselor Braithwaite's question, because I think it's actually, this is a common confusion for people, because we report our financial numbers in, I guess it's either SOFI or one of the other wonderful acronyms that we have to use for different reports. But in that, there's always a very large surplus showing because we carry forward things into reserves to cover costs in the following year and so forth. So can you just give a quick example? Because there are actually literally millions of dollars at the end of every year in terms of surpluses. Can you explain sort of where those numbers come from and how they relate to the actual surpluses in terms of, you know, what anybody, normal person, would consider as a surplus in terms of revenues over expenditures?
Sure. Through the chair, it is a bit confusing. So the financial statements report each year the beginning accumulated surplus, and that is the surplus that's been calculated over the years. And then the annual surplus is added to that for the end balance accumulated surplus. So there's two different terms there, one being the annual surplus and the other being the accumulated surplus. The accumulated surplus allows you to, the working capital, to continue your business up until such time as your taxes start coming in, so it ensures that we don't have to go to the bank and borrow funds to keep operating until May.
Thank you.
Okay, if there's no further questions or comments from Committee, I will go to the public and ask if there are any comments from the public. Please be sure to write your name down, and let us know your name on the mic and your municipal municipality of residence. Welcome.
Thank you. Esther Patterson, Woodlawn Crescent, Madam Chair, Members of Council. Good discussion, and many of the questions I had have been answered. But as long as other people are getting wish lists in, maybe I could get mine in too. And, one thing, just on the policy itself, nice to see that we are moving along on this. That's, it's a good start, and I certainly understand it's a living document and a work in progress, and it does take time to evolve. I was wondering, though, if we could perhaps expand the policy itself to also include that, in addition to this giving us financial sustainability, that it is also so that taxpayers can benefit from stable, equitable, and affordable property taxation. Particularly, I know Oak Bay has been a very stable community, and met lots of residents who've been here for many, many years, generations in fact, but populations are more mobile now. So certainly, the equitable part of taxation becomes quite an issue to many taxpayers in this day and age. And also, on, just, we talked, I know you're going to probably be wanting to do subcategories under your ledgers, but for the, just a couple of my ideas for some of the funds that I've seen, a financial stabilization reserve fund can be a very, very useful fund to have. And particularly, I think of this in terms of, if this district is going to choose to collect revenues, collect fixed revenues through variable revenue sources like water bills. So in other words, if you're going to collect your depreciation, your annual depreciation for, say, sewers through a variable expense vehicle, like the water bills, you could have unrealized revenues. And so, it's good to have a fund like this, so that then you can isolate. If in a year you don't realize those revenues, it brings those into a transparency that allows for better decision-making, as opposed to having them come through a general reserve fund. Because it will highlight them, and give you better guidance to work by in the future. And certainly, if there were any extraordinary things that came up too, it isolates them into that fund. So it's good for decision-making. I'd also like to see the capital works perhaps expanded, and I'm thinking of the gas tax revenues, because there's not really a clear way to see how those go through the accounts and where they end up. You have to, it's a circular route to find them. And we're hearing more and more from the Canadian Taxpayers Federation about how those revenues that are based on population and paid annually to us should be used annually for roads, rather than saved up and used for a larger project. And then also, thinking positively, a debt retirement reserve, because I feel that we're going to have more debt going along the way, but hopefully, we will also perhaps be in positions to retire that. And, one thing that has certainly become prevalent in the changing society is an information systems reserve, because sometimes information systems are very hard to get net book values for them as a tangible asset. They're not, they're not bricks and mortar, the way that our buildings, or our roads, or sewers are. But they are becoming an increasing cost to taxpayers, and it's, you know, something that we can benefit by having a better tracking mechanism to make decisions and plan for the future. So those are the few considerations I would like to add to the list. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Patterson. Is there anyone else that'd like to speak from the public? So, I'd be looking for a motion from the committee. Counselor Murdock?
I'm with, or the policy as it stands right now. Second.
Okay. Further comments? Counselor Zelka?
Thank you very much, Chair. Is it, in terms of order, is it possible to ask a question of the previous speaker? Is that in order? Of Esther Patterson? To clarify?
I think that might be better taken offline, but.
Well then, I'll just simply make a comment. Thank you very much, Chair. I found it interesting, talking about the suggestion for stable, equitable, and affordable as policy sort of guidelines. I know there's a lot of talk about trying to have affordable housing. And it seems to me that a lot of that discussion is focusing on people who don't live here yet, in terms of making housing to allow new people to move in. And what I found it interesting with the suggestion was, the affordable seems to be focusing on people who are already living here. And I found that very interesting. So that was a question I wanted to ask for clarification. When she speaks, when Ms. Patterson spoke of affordability, was she referring to people who are already here? Or was she referring about people that were wanting to possibly move here? I've heard someone say both. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. And, very interesting about the information systems reserve, agreed, it's not bricks and mortar. Very hard, I know, from an accounting perspective, to give a book value to something that ages faster than a dog. If I remember correctly, a dog ages, what, it's seven, seven, a dog years for one human year, but a computer is 10, computer years for one human year. It's much, much faster. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any further comments or questions from committee? Counselor Murdock?
Thank you. And I thought there were some good points made there, and I'm comfortable with the motion, but I'd be very curious to see if there's some things maybe could be brought in, in terms of consideration of other reserve fund ideas. Again, I think that some of the ideas, the stabilization fund, I'm not entirely clear on what a debt retirement fund is, or how that works exactly. Maybe Ms. Carter does, can explain that. If you can, I would appreciate that, but can you?
Typically, those are for, if you have a long-term loan, for example, and you have an opportunity to pay the loan off earlier, so if you set funds aside in order to pay down that loan quicker than it would normally take.
Okay. Okay, fair enough. I'm not sure why you wouldn't just pay that off as you were able, but I'll leave that alone, it's fine. So I guess my comments on this one are, I certainly appreciate the report. I think it helps us just to have a policy that articulates the reasons why. Clearly, we need to have some more work to do as a group. And if I was, when I was reading through it, I thought that the biggest issue I saw was just the, you know, reserves are there to kind of manage our long-term planning. And so I think, you know, part of this is that, you know, we're kind of ad-hocing where money goes, and so forth. So obviously, as we get the asset management plan coming forward, we have a better sense of the numbers. You know, structuring our reserves in a way that actually reflects those goals makes a lot of sense to me. And I think this document will probably change a little bit in that time, as we actually change those priorities, those policies. And right now, we're just working off the priorities as we have right now, but I think there's, those are sort of more short-term, and we're looking at our long-term priorities, those are probably a big piece there. And I guess the other part of that is, I would be very curious to see the details of how each of these are being done. I mean, the simple ones are the ones that, you know, the mayor laid out, you know, in terms of the putting 4% away for 25 years, and you get your fire truck. The harder ones are the ones that sort of have a mix of things, right? Like a sewer and the water that are, we need some money for emergencies, right? If we have a big break or something, we need that money for that. But we also are trying to put money aside in those to seek grants, and we might need different amounts of money, depending on the size of the grants, and we have access to different grants if we have. So it gets complicated in terms of what we want to do. So I think, again, the asset management piece with Mr. Harant sitting beside me here, having that piece, you know, in place, and having that sort of guide. We get, I think, and I think we do need to have these policies a bit stronger, and I think that would also allow us to take some of the ad hoc nature out of this, so that if we do have any surpluses, that we are very explicit as a community as to where that's going, so that we are sort of directly addressing some of those costs. And I just look at that, sort of the compound cost of not getting to the assets. If we're not doing the work now, then there's more breakages, there's more things that come into it. So, those are sort of my comments on that. There's, I really do appreciate that this municipality has overall done the right things, and you're continuing that process in terms of, you know, budgeting conservatively, putting money aside for things when they're needed. But obviously, we have a fairly large bill coming due, and we have to kind of use these as best we can to keep those costs down. So thank you very much.
Yeah, Counselor, Counselor. Ms. Carter, sorry.
Just on that note, I wanted to point out as well, so the policy that you see here is just as it stands today. I haven't factored in any additional recommended reserves, but I am familiar with some that the public has spoken about. In addition to that, funding infrastructure going forward, there also needs to be a balance between borrowing and reserve funds, for example. And, so I have actually the NFA Municipal Finance Authority coming into the March committee meeting to do a presentation, just to provide some further information on that.
That's great, thank you, Ms. Carter. If there are no further comments or questions from committee, I'm going to just quickly say my two bits. I wanted to thank you for this report, and for further clarifying things for us with the appendix, how we'll have minimums and maximums. I think as a now two-term counselor, I've kind of can keep up with the budget process and these funds, but I can tell you that at the beginning, understanding our position, certainly for long-range planning, was, I was very much in the dark. And so I appreciate your work here, because this is laying the groundwork for future councils, and making sure that they have all the information to make reasonable decisions. And as was mentioned by Ms. Patterson, that we want to make sure that we have fair and reasonable tax increases for the foreseeable future. And that, this is the kind of planning that will get us there, so I appreciate that work. Thank you. All right, I'll call the question. All in favor? Opposed? None opposed? Yep, okay, carried. Just feel like I'm tripping over my words here. We've got a short agenda, thank goodness. Land use application section. So, we only have three on tonight, and the first one is the number three Uplands Siting and Design at 2745 Beach Drive. I see that the applicants are in attendance. So, hold your horses, we don't, we may not have questions, so just we'll let you know to come up if we do have questions from the committee, okay? Thanks for attending tonight. So, I'll ask Ms. Carter to give us, Ms. Carter. See? Ms. Jensen? I don't know what's wrong with me tonight. Everybody's getting their names reorganized here. So, Ms. Jensen, our Acting Director of Building and Planning, would give us an overview of this item, thanks.
Same first name. This particular application for Uplands Siting and Design is for home that's just inside the Uplands gates on Beach Drive. It's a property that's bordered on, by Beach Drive on one side, and Sort Place on the other. The applicants are proposing to take down an existing addition that was constructed in 1995, and replace it with a new addition with a very similar footprint. They're also proposing a new terrace on the opposite side of the home, between the existing home and a detached garage that's along the property line. The application was reviewed by the Advisory Design Panel on January 2nd and February 6th. Some of the discussion at the design panel was around having a consistent design with the existing house, taking a closer look at the roof railing material around the single-story addition, and looking at the foundation treatment. And a number of those recommendations have been incorporated into the design that you have in front of you. So staff have reviewed the application with respect to the characteristics of the site. The siding for both the addition and the terrace will not impact adjacent neighbors. The addition is in essentially the same location as the existing siding on the east side of the home, which is adjacent to a vacant parcel. The terrace is located between the home and the detached garage, which blocks the terrace from the adjacent neighbor to the west. It may be slightly visible from the street, although some landscaping is already located in front of that area. No trees will be impacted, and staff are requesting council direction.
Thank you, Ms. Jensen. Do we have any questions from the committee? Those who visited the site today, want to give us any opinions?
Myself and Counselor Croft were out on the tour this morning. There was a single stop. And, really, it's along the lines of what Ms. Jensen was saying, it just will have little or no impact on, from the street, or even from behind, or from the empty lot. So, it's very much in keeping with the house now, and it certainly will add to it. Some of the work that had been done, in fact, in the 90s, we noticed it completely rotted away on the outer part of it, and so this will be an improvement on both sides of the house, but, thank you.
Thank you. All right.
I'll move the staff recommendation. Second.
Seeing, or does there any comments from the public? All right, seeing none, I'll call the question. All in favor? Opposed? None opposed? Thank you very much. All right, the next two items are development variance permits. If the committee determines that they're ready to proceed to council, notification will be undertaken following this meeting, and they will be finally considered at council on March 12th, 2018. So the next one is a DVP, sorry, Development Variance Permit Application for 1043 St. Patrick Street. I see we have, okay, if you'd like to give us an overview, Ms. Jensen, that'd be great.
Certainly, this request is to allow additional paved surface in the front yard. The applicants have installed paving stones in their front yard as part of a landscaping project. It was subsequently determined that the area exceeded the maximum allowable 25% paved surface. The initial application for a development variance permit was to retain the installed stonework at approximately 42%. This was presented to the Advisory Planning Commission in September 2016. The commission did not support that proposed variance at that time. So staff have subsequently been working with the applicants to determine how to proceed. The revised application was considered at the February meeting of the APC, proposing a 33% paved surface, which may reflect the amount of paved surface that was actually in place when the applicants purchased the property. Unfortunately, the district has no supporting documentation to identify any previous landscaping or what was approved. I apologize. So the paved surface has not yet been reduced to 33%. The commission was in favor of allowing that 33% variance, and the applicants are hoping to take that 33% and increase their green space, once that additional amount has been removed. So at this point, staff are looking for options from council.
Thank you, Ms. Jensen. Other questions from the committee for staff? Counselor Braithwaite?
Yeah, sorry, through you, Chair. Just to clarify, this, it's September 2016, not September 2017?
That's correct.
So that's quite a long period of time.
Yes.
And originally, would they have had to have had a proper permit to put in any paving stones whatsoever?
There's no requirement for a permit to put in landscaping materials such as paving stones.
Okay, and then, looking at the picture, it looks like there's quite a large amount of paving in the back as well.
Staff did look at that at the time, and it does fall below the 25%.
Below the 25%, okay. Thank you.
No? Any other further questions from committee for staff? Counselor Zelka?
Thank you very much, Chair. I wanted to ask, with respect to the paving stones, is there a sense of how much water may filter through this, in terms of the permeableness of it? And possibly what may be underneath it? Is there any sort of sense, please?
We have no record of what works were done underneath those paving stones, so it's very difficult to tell.
Okay. Are there any further comments or questions from committee? The applicant's here, I believe, yeah? And did they, are there any questions for the applicant from the committee? There are, okay, so if you guys could come on forward, join us at the mic. join us at the mic, and record your name and your area of, well, obviously, we know where you live, but, sorry. So, welcome, and just let us know your names on the mic, too, so that when, so that people watching at home, although we don't know how many there are, wearing this, watching this very exciting meeting, they know who you are.
My name is Josie DeGrief.
Thank you.
James DeGrief.
Welcome. All right, so there are questions from committee. Councillor Murdoch?
Thank you, through you, Chair. The question was actually related to the question that was asked. Do we, do you know what's underneath, where the existing paving stones are now? Is it, is it concrete, or is it just packed sand and so forth?
It's what is recommended to be underneath. I believe it's a bedrock, but...
Like a road base?
Yes, thank you. That's the right, yeah. That's the right.
Crushed rock.
Yes, crushed rock, yeah. And the required amount of crushed rock. I can't remember the required amount, but, yes, we want to make sure it was done properly, so, yeah.
And through you, Chair, so it's done to the point where we support a car's weight, essentially, under there. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And the intent is still to keep this as a turnaround space for a car in that space? Is that correct?
It was never intended as a turnaround space, and it's never, it is intended to be able to provide a safe, accessible access to our front steps, as well as to the side, or underneath our front steps where our main family entrance is. So, it's not intended to, our parking spaces are in the driveway, but are you wondering about what's in front of our front steps? Is that your question?
I, I think I've just, from my understanding of, of the nature of it, I mean, we're asked to, to approve a variance, and it hasn't been changed to just a little walkway. It's still got kind of angles to it. So, I guess I'm trying to get my head around why those little angles are there, if not to kind of allow a vehicle to sort of have some access space or something.
So, basically, it's intended so people can get in and out of the car easily. Along the, if I drive into my driveway, the driver is, side is along a very large hedge. So, there's very, very little space to be able to enter and exit that, the vehicle. And so, it does allow us to park slightly off-center, but not at an angle, just to be able to drive in through our very narrow entrance into our driveway, and then sort of move over off-center so that I can open up my door and get in and out of my car. That's our intention, and as well for the other side, to be able to exit and enter onto something that is stable and not like stepping stones that would be surrounded by mud and water, which was the case beforehand.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions from committee for the applicant? No? Is there anyone from the public that wants to ask a question about this application? No? All right. Thank you very much. And I think...
I'd move the staff recommendation to development variance permit to give notice.
Moved and seconded. Any further comments or questions? Councillor Murdoch?
I guess, I only, I'm just looking at this one, trying to understand the, the difference between these two. It goes from 42% to 33%. I'm not entirely clear that we're gaining any significant amount of actual green space. This is kind of a unique lot in the sense that this whole stretch of St. Patrick has got, you know, has walls down it. I'm not sure what the history of that wall is, maybe it was one, one estate at some point, but there's a large concrete wall running the entire length. It's, it's quite, it's quite different than most of our front lawns in the sense that you can't, you can't sort of see this as green space. And we're allowing for two little green pockets, so they're already existing little green pockets. So, they're slightly larger green pockets. And I guess I'm just trying to understand if this is worth, you know, forcing them to dig up and change all of these for what is a very small amount of land that's being gained here. I guess that's kind of what I'm just looking at. This is, is this actually any meaningfully, any meaningful improvement over what's there to make the, to make the, require the changes from 42% to 33% for this, for this aspect? Just because in this case, where that cement wall is, it's quite a unique pocket in terms, there's no sort of natural drainage onto the, onto the, onto the boulevard or anything else. So, that would be sort of my question. Maybe it is a question to the applicant, but I think I'm sure they know where they'd stand in that question of whether they wanted to have to do it or not. But I just throw it out to council, because I think this is actually kind of a unique one in the sense that the, the design for it isn't actually out of keeping with what's, what's there. And we're still asking for a fairly substantial ask of the applicant to change it for what is a fairly minor improvement, maybe room for one bush and a small piece of grass or something in terms of the green space. So, I'll, I'll leave it at that with anybody else at the table who has any comments on it.
Councillor Braithwaite?
I guess, through you, Chair, how I look at it is if, I mean, I understand where councillor Murdoch is coming from, but I also then would look at the bigger picture of the whole street. And if everybody on the street went to 43%, then what does that do to the whole look? So, that's kind of where I'm coming from. And, I mean, there's a reason that we have a 25% in place. And normally, I'm a real stickler for the, keeping it to the 25%. In this case, I, I'm okay with it going to the 33, based on some of the things that, that what councillor Murdoch was saying. But I, I don't feel comfortable going to the 43, only because if we allow you to do it, then other people along your street might feel that they should be able to do it as well. And then that takes out even a bigger chunk of the green space. So, that's probably where I would come from.
Councillor Neay?
Chair, can we go back and ask the applicant the question that councillor Murdoch was posing about what the rationale was for this?
Certainly. They're still at the table, so...
Okay, so through you, Chair, then. Could you expand on what the, you know, you've given some background.
Councillor Neay, can you speak into the mic? Thanks.
If you could just pin this down for us and...
Are you talking specifically about the paving stones that are in front of our front steps between the pedestrian sort of entrance into our house and the front steps? Is that the area that you're talking about, that you would like more clarification on?
Councillor Murdoch, is that where you're at?
Yeah, I mean, that's the, the big gain here is a, is a sort of a small little one-foot by two-foot sort of space of, of ground that's being opened up in a slightly different angle, it looks like, from the, from the street side, to open up another, you know, half a foot or two feet or a foot or so. So, I'm just curious, yeah, what, what this compromise was in terms of, and how it arrived at this point? Is it sort of the absolute minimum size that was allowed, open your doors and step out? Or what was the, the intent?
Okay, sorry, I, now I'm even more confused about what your question is.
I, I think I can, I can try and answer. So, all the neighbors that we talked to that we live close by, really like how we redesigned our front yard with all the green space. And so, it, it's not an issue of, of design and, and look. Although, I appreciate the point of everyone did the, the 42% that my wife did. But, I threw her under the bus. I was trying not to. But, when we worked with the design team here, and there was a fair bit of back and forth, we, basically, we tried to get to a percentage number that we thought would be agreeable with everyone. And so, so that, so we kind of said, we worked that out, and then we got to roughly, well, we got to 33%. And then we said, okay, how can we design this to still be aesthetically pleasing, but to achieve the 33%? So, so it's going from the 42 to the 33, the real consideration is getting the percentage down to something that's closer to what's, what's allowed.
But, can I just add to that? I think the, the most important thing was, like, we need it to be practical. We need it to be safe. We need it to be able to have as much green space as possible. And I'm absolutely in, in support of as much green space as possible. That's where my own ethics lie, is green space. I, so, I, but I need it to be able to work and function, and I need it to be aesthetically pleasing. So, and it needs to be safe. So, we have a very tricky situation that we're dealing with, and trust me, it has not been easy to make it work. So, I, I basically said, if you can come up with a plan and design that can meet those requirements, I'm more than happy to bring it down to 25%, but we can't, in a way that works properly. So, I thought, you know, that we could do it originally the way we had. If that's not okay, then we will make some compromises, which I actually believe are compromises. I believe that it creates really tight pinch points for people who, like, for example, my husband parks in front of me. For him to walk down along our driveway, and then to come around into the entrance of our house, because we don't go in through our back, we don't go in through our backyard to enter into our house. We walk always to the front yard. For him to walk down, it will be a very tight pinch point. He'll probably have a foot to walk between, like, that will be the width of his pathway when I'm parked my car there. So, we're willing to make that compromise to bring it down to 33%, but right now, he has about two feet to be able to walk between my bumper and the green space. But, we're, we're willing to go there. It's fine. So, yeah, yeah. It, it is a bylaw, but we're trying to work in a, with, I think, a very difficult situation. So, if you look at where our front steps go, the width of our front steps, the design of the fence that's been there since probably 1912, between our house and the boulevard, I think we're trying to do the best we can with what we have. So, that's sort of where we're at, I think, in terms of the drainage. Before we fixed this issue, the drainage was so incredibly poor, we were walking in inches and inches of water, entering and exiting our vehicle. So, maybe because of the type of soil that is on our property, I don't know exactly why. But, so, that's sort of, we've tried to do the very best we can. We've increased the canopy, the amount of, yes, we may have less green space, but our canopy has increased incredibly hugely since, from doing this work. We don't have any more grass. It's all shrubs and trees. So, that's sort of where, where we're at with, with it. But, I agree, aesthetics is really important. Safety is really important. Practical walkways are really important. So, that's what we're trying to do.
You have a little lineup. So, Mayor Jensen, and then councillor Zelka, councillor Braithwaite, councillor Murdoch.
Just trying through you, just trying to kind of understand and simplify this. So, right now, you have a situation which you'd prefer to retain, correct? And your neighbors are supportive of that situation, correct?
Yes, they are.
So, and my next question again is to staff, Chair. If we were to back up from the 33 and then drive down to the 43, 42, sorry, it'd be a bit tricky procedurally, because I assume we could do it one of two ways. We could just table this and let the applicants bring variation for 42, or we could defeat this and ask the applicants to bring back the request for 42. And they, that, to some extent, will depend on the signals that council sends. But, from what I hear from the applicants and from what the neighbors say, I don't think it's onerous to go to 42. And I would certainly be open-minded to support this, to support that as, as the way forward, to make the space more usable, and not to require the applicants to go to the expense for, as councillor Murdoch has said, not a lot of benefit. I suppose the benefit is really to get closer to the requirements of our bylaw. But we do have that ability to vary, so. But I suppose, to some extent, it depends whether or not there's a majority of council that's open to 42, and how do we signal that without closing our minds. So, maybe that's a long question for staff. How, how might we go about that? Should that be the will of council?
Mr. Jones?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think the, if, if that were the will of council, I think what you would probably do is table this and ask staff to come back with a, to, to meet with the applicants and talk about the 42%, because we would need to come back with some different information.
Thank you, Mr. Jones.
If I could just finish that, then, I guess, without pushing too many to any of the other councillors, just to see if there is a, somewhat of a consensus to proceed in that direction. I'd certainly be prepared to do that. Thank you.
All right, councillor Zelka?
Thank you, Chair. I've got a question to start with staff, and then a comment. With respect to the image from 2015, figure number two in your report for the acting director of building and planning, is that image showing 25% coverage in the front yard? I wasn't quite sure what percentages cur, what was existing before any of the works were done, please.
Thank you, through you, Chair.
And I appreciate it's difficult to see on here. In fact, the, the paved surface in the front yard from 2015 consisted of a series of larger paving stones that were surrounded by grass. So, we're probably looking at about the same amount of paved surface that was in place in 2015 at about 33% than, as to what the applicant is requesting.
Thank you very much for that, for clarifying that for me. Appreciate it. I, I owned a house not that far from here, on McNeil. And, you know, in, in an effort, I appreciate your wanting to, the applicant wanting to have a nice, safe, and, and comfortable 1912 house. Thank you very much, by the way, for keeping our, our housing stock looking as beautiful as it is. I also sort of had a similar issue, yet a challenging front, front yard. The previous owner, 1942 house, had put in this 20-foot-long planter, two or three feet wide, about two or three feet high, just high enough along the driveway to dent my car door every time I opened it. So, removing that planter was very important to make the driveway kind of useful. But then, of course, stepping off the driveway onto grass for the wet parts of the year are always difficult. So, I, I understand what you're trying to do, and, and with the, with the permeability of, of the land in that area, I know it's challenging. I, I, in this case, I'm, I'm leaning towards the suggestion as put forward by councillor Braithwaite to, to support the, the design as it is. I, I definitely appreciate the comments from the Advisory Planning Commission, which didn't support the original plan. And I, I commend the applicant for coming forward with an, an adjustment to, to try and sort of meet the bylaw, meet our, our experts on the planning commission, our, our citizen experts, and, and also provide a way to, to meet in some ways the, the expectations as, as expressed in our, in our bylaws of, of the community as well. So, I would be supporting the motion as is. Thank you.
Okay. Councillor Neay?
You, Chair, to Ms. Jensen, can you give us a little bit more information why the APC asked for the provision to the 30%, 33%?
As I recall, again, it was a while ago, I believe at the time, they were concerned about, first of all, the impacts from stormwater and, and impermeability. They also talked about the, the desire through OCP policy for retaining green space and having green streetscapes throughout the, throughout the community.
Do we have any information that impacts on stormwater is an issue? They're using pavers here, right?
Correct, but it all depends on what the base is underneath that, as to how impermeable it may be.
Which we've now been told is, yeah, okay. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Braithwaite?
Thank you, through you, Chair. So, I unfortunately can't support what the mayor is, is suggesting. I would like to see it stay at the 33%. I have a couple of issues in that, you know, we try very hard within this municipality to have people follow the bylaws that we put in place. If the bylaw is incorrect, we should be changing the bylaw. And I think that there's a couple of things here. Number one, you weren't aware that it was only supposed to be 25% in your front yard. We have to make our residents more aware of what our bylaws are. And the second thing is, is that the design team that you were working with wasn't aware. That design team, if they're working in Oak Bay, they should know what the rules are in Oak Bay, as far as I'm concerned. So, I, I think that we have a, a couple of little issues there, in that we have to somehow, as a municipality, get these, get these bylaws and, and these rules that we have put in place to protect our, our community, and to protect the green space, is what was brought forward by the APC, in, in such a way that, that we're not going to, you know, have paving in the front yards like this, that's so... yards like this, that's so, so far away from what our bylaw is. So again, I appreciate the fact that you're willing to go down to the thirty-three percent, which is still, you know, eight percent above what our bylaw says. If our bylaw is incorrect, we should be changing our bylaw. But for now, I think I would like to support the recommendations that have come forward by staff, but also have some consideration that we'll be able to somehow get people to be more well-versed in what our rules are. So, thank you.
Counselor Croft?
I share Counselor Braithwaite's concerns. I know you've been waiting for this for a long time, to get on with life since 2016. I really don't want to signal to the community that people that are, because you don't need to get a permit for this, that all of a sudden we're looking at this kind of site coverage. So I think that we need to send the signal that we do have rules and they should be respected, and I like it that we're going back to what was there before, the thirty-three percent. I think that's respectful for what was available, so I'm quite happy to support, as I moved it, the motion that's before, supported by staff and the Advisory Planning Commission.
Counselor Murdock?
I think that's fair. I brought it up because I thought it was, you know, somewhat reasonable, and I appreciate the mayor making it a bit more formalized in terms of the discussion, but I, I think if we're going to make that motion to go larger, it should be unanimous. I think that this is a good sounding board as a, of the community at this table, and if there isn't that, and you guys have reached that compromise and are comfortable moving this forward as the application is, so I'll support the motion as it stands, and I think we can move forward.
All right, are there any other further comments or questions from the committee? Did, you guys had some further comment?
Yeah, I just had one. So it did take us quite a while to go from the forty-two to the thirty-three, and we totally appreciate everyone's sentiments around the table, but we are, like, we've got to a place where we're happy with the thirty-three and the green space additions, and it's extra cost and work, but, but it's, I think, a good place where we got to, so. But I appreciate everyone's sentiments.
Thank you. All right, then I think we're ready for the question. So I'll, were there, did I ask for comments from the public? Did anyone want to comment on this from the public? I think I've already asked that, but just make sure. Okay, all call the question, all those in favor? Opposed? None opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you. Thank you for your efforts and for working with staff. All right, the last item on the agenda is item number five, development variance permit application for two-three-one-four Oak Bay Avenue. We have a report from the Acting Director of Building and Planning. If you could provide us with a brief overview, Ms. Jensen, thanks.
Let's see if I can do this without losing my voice. This is an existing twenty-five-unit residential apartment building along Oak Bay Avenue. There are, there's currently some existing underutilized space in the apartment building that the applicants are proposing to turn into two additional residential units. To do that, trigger to review the parking bylaw. Initially, when the development first happened in nineteen-sixty-five, they had an approved parking layout for twenty-five parking stalls for the site. Since that time, there's been some modification, and they now have eighteen stalls that they are using for the, for the site, for the twenty-five rental units. To meet the parking bylaw requirements today, they would be looking at providing sixty-one parking stalls as well as increasing the drive aisle widths, and they have two drive aisles, one on both the west and the east side of the building. So the applicants proposing to modify what they have now, the eighteen parking spaces, to accommodate an additional five, so they'd be going to twenty-three vehicle parking spaces, and increasing the drive aisle width. Proposed variances would be to the number of parking stalls, to the number of small-car parking spaces provided, and to the drive aisle width on the west side of the site. As part of the application, the applicants did provide a parking study, which shows that at peak time, the parking demand rate is at point-three-six vehicles per unit, and they estimate that with the addition of the two rental units, they'd be looking at providing one additional vehicle space. The Advisory Planning Commission reviewed the application on February sixth and indicated that the requested variances were supportable as the proposal adds additional rental stock within the village, and that it would be difficult to comply with the parking facilities bylaw. Staff worked with the applicant to explore various options for the parking. The proposed layout adds the additional parking spaces back to the site in an area where parking is already underutilized on the site and alternative transportation is easily available. Staff are requesting council direction.
Thank you, Ms. Jensen. All right, so do we have questions from the committee, starting with Counselor Neay?
Well, let me ask this to staff, it might be better to the applicant, but maybe staff knows this question, so through you, Chair, let me ask. First of all, this really does show how outdated our parking facilities bylaw is when we see these numbers like this, but my question has to do with, I'm pleased to see these as affordable rental units, but do we know how much, what affordable means in this instance, or is that better asked of the applicant? Yeah, that's what I thought. Okay, thank you.
All right, is the applicant in attendance? All right, you can come join us and make sure to write your name down, and then we'll get to questions for the applicant after we have questions for staff. So just hang on two secs, and we'll get through the committee's questions for staff first. Are there any other further questions from committee for staff? Counselor Croft?
Is there any effect on green space, trees, that sort of thing with the addition of the two units and the additional parking stalls?
Ms. Jensen?
No, no change to the vegetation that's already on site, it really is utilizing the existing parking layout and revising it.
Thank you. Counselor Zelka?
Thank you, Chair. A question for staff. While in general, the variances don't, in general offend me, I did want to ask with respect to the electric cars, or any provision, or could there be, or should there be any provision for charging point stations, for example, or is this something that we could ask for? I just don't know quite what to do with that one. Thank you.
As a development variance permit, we wouldn't be looking to set any kind of additional conditions on the approvals. The applicant is certainly free to offer up if they want to do something like that, but we would be looking very specifically at the current parking requirements under the bylaw.
Thank you. A follow-up question, if I may. With respect to the parking bylaw, I agree, it appears to be a little bit out of date. In a review and a redo of that bylaw, would we be within our rights as a district to put in, for example, charge point aspects within a bylaw for the future? I just wanted to query that point.
Can you answer that, Ms. Jensen, or should we save that for another time, Mr. Rand?
I don't think it would be so much through a parking bylaw that we would be looking for those things, it's more through the zoning bylaw or development permit guidelines or building code.
Thank you, Ms. Jensen. Okay, are there any questions? Are we ready for questions from the committee for the applicant? Counselor Neay?
So just to repeat the question, I thank you for coming forward with this, it's nice to see to add to, the opportunities to add affordable rental units to our inventory, they're, they seem to be in high demand, so thank you for doing that. Yeah, so the question really is, what is affordable? If you could specify that, please?
First of all, I just want to introduce myself. My name is Peter DeHogue, I'm with DeHogue &amp; Carrefour Architects.
Welcome.
Running the project. Yeah, of course, you know, the question of affordability is something that comes up with every project we do, whether it's a condominium or rental. And I think what will make these affordable, and maybe I should, if I can just get the, get the plan, I can just kind of point out how these are going to be located in the building. So, this is generally the floor plan of the building. This is the existing unit here, and the way that the grade works, it kind of slopes from this corner down Oak Bay and from the front of the lot to the back, so this is underbuilding parking here, and this was a laundry unit, this was, this was an area that was just stuffed with kind of old furniture, I think that just sort of accumulated in the building over time. And this was a large, this is a large storage area, which is really not utilized at all. So what we're proposing to do is there's, there are some big light wells here, that there would be a little apartment that would be incorporated, there's already a bathroom there, there's already plumbing because of the laundry, so this is a fairly easy, it actually looks, when you go into it, that it had been, it had been made into an apartment already, kind of illegally, I guess, or non-conforming.
I'm just going to interrupt you briefly, just to say to anybody watching, or if anybody would like to follow along with the agenda, this is on page four of the plans.
Okay.
What you're showing us now. Thank you.
So, so it's really sort of formalizing this little apartment that more or less exists already. It'll be stripped out and new plumbing and a new kitchen and flooring and all that sort of stuff. And then at the back, the idea is that we will create another little apartment in the back. These are not large apartments, they're a little over five hundred square feet, adding some window space at the back, and I think it's the nature of these apartments, because, you know, this is now parking in here, this is not what you would call premium real estate. So this isn't like, you know, a nice garden suite in the back of a yard somewhere where, you know, you can, this is really kind of, I mean, I won't call it second-class housing, but it's, it is a premium residential space, so I think that in itself will sort of begin to keep it from becoming really expensive in the sense of the rental rates. Certainly, the apartments, you know, these apartments, you know, they are currently fairly affordable, they will, over time, probably be less affordable as the building, and this is generally happening, you know, in the city, everywhere, where these older buildings are being upgraded, and as a result, you know, rents are going up. It's just the way it works. But I think one of the things here is that, you know, this really does just provide the opportunity for a couple of small apartments for, you know, either some students or, you know, but when you say affordable, you know, is it seven hundred dollars a month? I don't know, nine hundred dollars a month. It certainly won't be kind of in the fourteen-hundred-dollar-a-month range, which is where I think one-bedroom apartments sort of are now.
Thank you, Mr. DeHogue.
Just a quick follow-up. The suite number two on the back, it looks like, I may not be reading the plans right, but the bedroom has no window, is that correct?
It has, it will have sort of some, a glass sliding door, sort of a barn door, kind of.
Into the hallway.
Into the hallway, yeah, yeah, yeah. So it doesn't actually have a window of its own, and we do this fairly typically in smaller sort of studio-type apartments, where the bedroom is quite small, and you have the sliding door, which then gives the hallway, becomes in effect part of the bedroom when you're there on your own.
Okay, thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Are there any other further questions from the committee? Okay, seeing none, are there any questions from the public? Any other comments from the public or questions? No?
Move the recommendation.
Second. I just wanted to add my comments in that I'd support the application. I think our parking bylaw, as the commission mentions, is definitely in need of updating, and as we've seen the last two major developments in Oak Bay, the Clive and the Boulker both had major reductions in parking requirements, so I appreciate that you've taken the opportunity to update the planning and the layout of this parking lot and make it more efficient, and I think that's, speaks to the change in our, just the way we do things these days.
If it helps, we are also adding a six-stall bicycle rack in the front.
Great.
Because there is some space there, and that helps. And the owner has committed to car-share membership for tenants who, you know, request.
Want to participate in that. That's wonderful, thank you.
I don't know exactly how much car-share there is in Oak Bay yet, but.
No, we have very strong membership. There's one at the Monterey Center already, just across the way, and.
So, and I think sort of, at that, you know, there's a good chance that the net, the net car add for the building will be probably zero.
Zero, given especially that it's on a bus route and very accessible to the, all the amenities in the village, yes. Thank you, thank you for that. Counselor Braithwaite?
Just a quick comment, I just, I wish we could see more things like this come forward, where it's not, it's not affecting the footprint of the building, but it's adding to our, the apartments that are available to rent within our community, and I'm sure that they're going to be beautiful, whether they're going to be, you know, not as nice as some of the other ones in the building or not, but I'm sure they're going to be lovely, and you'll find some great renters, and it's just lovely to have this opportunity to be able to approve something like this within our community, so thank you.
We certainly do need more variety of housing options, and especially for rentals, so thank you very much for that. I fully support the application. So I'm going to call the question, all those in favor? Opposed? None opposed? Motion carries? Thank you very much.
Move adjournment?
Call the question, all in favor, opposed, none opposed. We adjourned, thanks.